According to Apple 401, call the meeting in order. This meeting of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting on April 7th at 4:00 PM. Welcome, welcome. Just a couple of our usual housekeeping items. Again, we have another large agenda and appreciate everyone's patience as we flow through the business. And as a public service reminder, these meetings of the board are open to the public. However, they are not town meetings. There's a time on the agenda for public comment. For those attending relative to anyone desiring to provide public comment, we will, you'll be able to do so. Alrighty, so first order of business is we have a bunch of meeting minutes to approve.
I'd like to add something to all business.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I needed to do that.
It would be 8.12 Senior Center.
You want to add it where?
Under all business 8.12.
So I have a motion.
Thank you.
Those in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
I'd like to add an item, I'd like to add an item too, if, if we need to. The, the hiring subcommittee for the Park and Rec Director, did we disband that officially?
Um, Joyce. That was, I don't think that was a, that was not a Board of Selectmen Subcommittee, that was a Park and Rec Subcommittee, I'm pretty sure. Can you confirm that, Joyce?
I believe that also, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that it was, that that was a Park and Rec Subcommittee.
We have not met since.
I'm pretty sure that was a Park and Rec Commission Subcommittee.
Okay, so if that's not ours, we don't have to disband, but if it is ours, then we probably should, so, okay.
And I would like to make a motion to move 7.4 EMS staffing up to new 7.2 under the resolution regarding the streetscape Phase 1. Need a second for that.
Second.
Thanks. Bonnie has a conflicting meeting, so she asked to be moved up on the, the agenda. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Are we all set?
Yes.
Okay. Back to minutes. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 sets of minutes to approve. Are we ready to approve them?
Are we doing them all at once, or are we doing them?
We've done them together in the past.
I'm, I mean, there were some small typos, nothing worth going into in my head, but.
So I will make a motion to approve the March 8th special, the March 11th special, the March 15th special, the March 17th regular, the March 22nd special, and the March 29th special meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. So just a point of discussion that I think we need to understand, or I, I feel like these minutes have, have expanded out to become really transcriptions. And it's not really what minutes are meant to be. I, I'm sure they're incredibly time consuming. I know they're incredibly time consuming for you, Joyce. But they're, they've turned into something completely different, and if we are looking to have transcriptions, we should have a conversation about that. They're really, they're not minutes. I think they, I think they should be minutes. They should be, you know, the golden rule of minute taking is you document what you did, what was done, not what was said. But we're really sort of doing the opposite at this point.
Well, that's sort of a result of Zoom and everything else. You know, some people like to read, some people like to listen. I don't know.
If I may speak for a moment?
Sure.
Um, I, I was going to provide a written report regarding this. I knew that somebody would ask. I have felt compelled to do them this way for a multitude of reasons. Within a meeting, within a sentence, motions are made, they're not seconded. There's a thought that goes off into the weeds. There's discussion that happens, and then a motion gets made. There's discussion, there's no second. These meetings go on endlessly. And I completely understand what minutes are, but I cannot wrap my head around how to condense that information so that I'm not omitting the discussion that was had. So I'm asking that the Board of Selectmen do a better job when they make motions and when there's discussion, so that I can then do the minutes properly.
And I completely support that. I, I think we do need to be better and more succinct when we're making motions and being present to say, to second a motion and make them so that their motions that Joyce can record.
Believe me, doing them this ma- in this manner is not fun. It is extremely time consuming. I don't want to continue to do it this way. I did it so that people would read them, including the board, and realize and hopefully stop and see and, and try to do better. I don't know what else to say.
Well, I'm, I am committed to getting us to do better. I, you know, I've been put on the spot about redoing motions and rescinding motions, asking you guys, but this is, we need to, we need to be more succinct in our motions. We need to, this is the business of the, the board. The discussion that happens is discussion, but the, you know, official business of the board is done through motion, so we need to make sure that we're not wordsmithing as we go, but we're ready to make these motions succinct so that Joyce can translate them and we can just keep moving forward. So I'm committing to that. I would love to hear from you guys to also commit to that, so we can three move forward in helping Joyce and helping the town have minutes that are not, you know, a transcription of, of a meeting.
I, I agree. I think from the start, we've, we've tried to have, we've tried anyway to have shorter meetings. We've tried to had, you know, not have longer meetings. And anything that'll help Joyce in this regard is, is good. So, so let's make it more succinct, these meetings.
Rufus, you've tossed it in with us? Fantastic. So for the six sets of minutes, without having to say that motion again, all those in favor?
Hi.
Bye. Thank you. Under three, there's correspondence in your folder from Matt Winter. Matt, I think I saw you come on the meeting. Sorry, we have a long, there you are.
Hi. I don't, I, I, I don't need to take up your time to, uh, to reiterate what I said in that, in that email. I would just like this, the, the board to maybe state what their beliefs are with regard to the meetings. Should they be, you know, should they be in person? Should they be video recorded? Should those, should those videos be legible, audible? Should they be audio recorded? Should those recordings be audible? How much transparency can we have as, as members of the, of the community? So I'd, I'd like it if you guys would discuss it. I'm, I'm, I know you're really busy, so. Thanks.
I, I think that we're all in agreement that they should be all of those things. Matt, we have, there are two bills that are, I was just reading about them. They are to codify the remote meeting concept in statute, and they're working their way through. So we're gonna, we need to sort of finalize this hybrid meeting approach, but we do, we did pass the resolution to record meetings. So that was taken care of, so that we're recording all of the meetings. I think that everybody agrees that with what you're saying.
Thanks. Yeah, it's, it's logging, it's logging through some of the, some of the meetings that are, that are video recorded using a single device across the room. It's, you can hear the people close, but, but everything else is largely inaudible. So thanks for your consideration and your continued hard work.
Thanks.
Hey, Matt, can I ask you a question? Yes, Glenn. Yeah, in your, in your email, you mentioned that you, you listened to the ARPA Subcommittee meeting, and you said that was very audible. You, you heard everything there that was said?
Yes, yes, I know that, that, that's a small group, Glenn, I know, and you can all sit relatively closely together, but I think the technology that, that they were using there can be somewhat daisy chained for, for a larger meeting. I'm not sure that's, that's the solution for the, for the large conference room. And I don't think it is, but for smaller meetings, I think that's, that's perfectly adequate.
So I'd like to not get too far in the weeds on this because we do have the topic down further in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Uh, there are other pieces of, oh, sorry. I missed that.
I said, thank you, Matt, for your letter.
Um, there are two others. One is about the Richards Road Tower Project. Looking to see if Matt Starr is on, no. And then one from Lynn, and I see her on the meeting regarding the there was one amount missing from the budget. And Lynn's comment was on that. She was at the Board of Finance last night. Is there anything else on that, or can we move along? Okay, moving to public comment. Bear with me if people could raise their hands for this first public comment, that would be great. We'll scan a list. Don't see anything. So we will continue to move on for tax refunds, and I will put this in the form of a motion to approve seven tax refunds for a total of $1,423.26.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi. Next, we have the treasurer's report.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm just gonna go right into my screen share. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is my usual report that I send. Haven't gotten around to it in a while, but this incorporates both February and March. So typical to my report, it gives you all the different meetings that I've attended at the top. This little section right here gives you the number of transactions for these types of items and the dollar value associated with them. And then this section here gives you the actual versus budget as of the last day, the previous month. So this is as of March 31. Underneath that, there are some highlights. I wanted to point out that we've been notified that the Region School District Number One has done their final audit, and they are returning an undesignedated fund balance to the town of $80,680. That comes back in the form of a credit against our last payment to Region One for the monthly assessment. That's the bonus on the revenue piece. The rest of these are about expenditures. And I know that I've already put the cost share of the Lake Warmog Police Boat on my report, but I kind of wanted to keep it on there to keep it in everybody's forefront, that, that basically has used up the contingency, so there is no contingency available. I wanted to notify everyone that it is estimated, or I'm estimating at this point, that my department will exceed its budgeted amounts due to staffing and software costs in this fiscal year. My options to not have this happen are very limited. I could not use my staff for the rest of the year and not upgrade my software. Those are my choices. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I am going to be discussing this at the Board of Finance level as well. It's my understanding that there's an additional $50,000 estimated expenditure that will be coming through the EMS staffing costs that was not budgeted for this year. Currently, they have $15,000 left in the amount that was appropriated for that line. So there's still three months left, or three and a half months, because I don't think they've billed us for the second half of March yet. At this point, I'm expecting a nega- a variance for the Welcome Center of over $7,400. That's mostly due to cleaning, and that line was typically under budgeted. Anyway, this has been talked about a little bit before. I just want to keep it in everybody's forefront. And then just recently, there's been discussion about the Scotticoke litigation fund, and based on the information that I've received from legal counsel, there's going to be an estimated 46,750 dollars of additional costs that will need to be funded in this fiscal year. It's going to be up to the Board of Finance how they want to handle that cost, but everybody needs to be aware of it. The next part of my report, and I did send this out to everybody. I hope you had time to look at it before the meeting. We've been appropriating $30,000 a year for the Scotticoke Litigation Fund, so for this current fiscal year of that $30,09500 or $950 has been spent to date. That leaves us with $29,050. There's $30,000 currently in the proposed budget for next year, but I don't think that's going to be enough. Again, based on the information received from counsel, there may be another $70,000 that may need to be put into next year's budget instead of 30. Or I should say, up it from 30 to 70. But again, that's going to be a discussion that we have to have a little bit over time. Any questions so far?
On the Scotticoke, so last year, there was also 30,000, and the year before that?
I, I would actually have to look back, but there was no roll forward balance here for last year. And I believe that there was a lapse in timing. I'd have to look back exactly at the timeline. But a couple of years ago, we were notified by counsel that this litigation was over, or basically over. And then last year, I think, or right before Bruce, Bruce's term end and Jean's term started, he notified us that, oh, it's not actually over. The federal government has modified the rules or changed the rules, or I don't, I'm paraphrasing poorly, I apologize, but anyway, it's, it's resurfaced. So we did put $30,000 in the budget last year, but there was no roll forward balance from the year before.
So there's, in all probability, there was money set aside in past years that was not expended.
No, well, this, this appropriation actually is a special appropriation. It's called a transfer. So it doesn't sit in the general fund. So once it's appropriated as a transfer on July 1, it gets transferred out of the general fund. And it's called non-lapsing. That means if it's not spent within the fiscal year, it just rolls over to the next fiscal year. So we don't put it back and take it out, put it back and take it out. So yes, there have been prior year appropriations, many of them. I would have to look back at the long history to see what the total was, but it's all been spent on litigation for this matter.
Thank you.
So the next page of my report, I thought it was a good idea at this point in the year. I like to do it a little bit earlier, but again, things have just been a little hectic. This is the current status of the Capital Projects Fund. So over here on the far left is the name of the capital project. The next column to the right of it is the balance that it started with on 7/1 at the beginning of the fiscal year. The next column to the right of that is the appropriation that that project received, if any, on 7/1 of this year. Next column is state grants or donations that were applicable to these particular grants. Interest income, all of the interest income basically goes back into the five-year reserve. This column is representative of the expenditures to date from 7/1 to date for each particular project. These transfer between projects is, when we have the appropriation on 7/1, a lot of the appropriation goes towards projects that aren't fully funded yet. So it goes to this five-year reserve. And then on 7/1, when that project actually comes and is fully funded, the money gets transferred out of the five-year reserve to fund the previous four years of the project, et cetera. So that's what that column is. At this point, to my knowledge, we haven't discussed any projects that are going to close at this end of the fiscal year. And this far right column on, that's green, is the current balance of these projects. And I just want to point out two things right here. I don't know if you can see my little hand. I don't know. Number nine and 10, those are two bridge projects, both of which we are on the receiving end of funding from the state and federal government. So that's why they're in a negative, but once we receive that funding, those will be wiped out. And so that's the status. And then the last page I have is just the Building Inspector's Report that shows the value of all the building permits that have been issued, the payments that we've paid out to the Building Inspector, the town chair, and the construction value. And I just want to point out that even though the construction value is 22 million, it does not transfer dollar for dollar to the general fund. Some are to the grand list, excuse me, some of the construction value does transfer over to the grand list, but it is not anywhere near dollar for dollar, because building permits are issued for all sorts of things. Not necessarily all of those things increase the appraised value of a residence. So that's all I had for my report. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
And I, I did notice that on your agenda, way at the end, under old business, 8.11, you've got funding discussion regarding response to Scotticoke Indian Tribe. I was not planning on staying on the meeting this whole time, because I'm actually not working in Kent today. So I'm wondering that if you want me to be available for that discussion, maybe could you move that up and we could discuss it now?
Um, yeah. I'm, I'll make a motion to move 8.11 to, do you want it right next, or do you want it after 7.1?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, so I'll move, I'll make a motion to move 8.11 up underneath the new, new 7.2 underneath that 7.1 resolution. Think I just broke my own promise to Joyce. Any questions? All those in favor? Hi, thanks. So Barbara, you're good with your, your treasurer's report?
If no one has any questions or comments.
Don't have anything. I'm moving on to new business, 7.1 Resolution Regarding Streetscape Phase 1. This is under Barbara's purview, so I'm going to give her back the floor.
Okay, so I went back to screen sharing, and I now have a copy of this resolution up on my screen. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to give you a little bit of background here. This has come about because of consults that I've had with bond counsel and the most efficient process to formally recognize and distinguish Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the streetscape project as two different phases. When the original funding resolution was adopted, we didn't think about it in two separate phases, and that's partly because way back in March of 2019, the Board of Selectmen approved the first original funding resolution. From there, it went to the Board of Finance in March, two weeks later of 2019. From there, it went to a town meeting in May of 2019. And then a referendum was held on May 16th, and the taxpayers approved that original funding resolution. And again, back then, it was just called the Streetscape Improvement Project. In September of that same year, we're talking four months, five months later, Bruce applied for funding through the Northwest Hills CAG to ConDOT to be considered for the TAP program, and TAP stands for Transportation Alternatives Program. And there was an opportunity for Kent to receive a large chunk of the funding for the streetscape project through this program, which is funded by the federal government. A year and a half later, in August of 2020, Kent was informed that, yes, indeed, ConDOT has approved the Kent application for funding through that program. So now all of a sudden, we basically had two different programs. So at one of the Streetscape Committee meetings for Streetscape Phase 1, just recently, one of the members, I believe it was the chairman, brought up the concern of how the funding resolution applied to these two different projects. And that's what prompted me to reach out to bond counsel and to repeat myself with consult from him. The most efficient process was to have the Board of Selectmen adopt this clarifying resolution, which now designates the original resolution and allocates it to Phase 1, and there will be another funding resolution that will have to go through the same process as that first resolution, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Town Meeting, to formally recognize Phase 2 and accept the million dollars, what is it? $1,882,000 that the federal government is going to provide to the town of Kent to fund Phase 2. So that's my little bit of backstory. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. If there are none, the next thing we would need would be a motion to waive the reading of the entire resolution, or you'll have to listen to my raspy voice as I read this whole thing.
So unless there are any questions, Rufus or Glenn, I will make a motion to waive the reading of the entire resolution and to put, incorporate its full text into the minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. And so our next order of business would be to adopt that resolution, which I will put in the form of a motion to, a motion to adopt the proposed resolution.
Second.
Rufus seconded. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Thanks, Barbara, for getting this all very. Thank you. Thanks Barbara for getting this all very. Organized and so we could. Get through it easily. Moving on to. The new seven point two. The funding discussion regarding response to the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe Federal Acknowledgement Petition. So Barbara, I'm going to have you come back on.
Well, the only thing I wanted to be available for this discussion, just because I didn't know what you had intended now after. The meetings that you had that went into executive session and came out of executive session. In discussion with Eugene. I recall, I asked that we could call back Attorney Sinkowitz so that I could get some clarification on what this funding was about because I wasn't at that meeting. Subsequent to that, I sent him an email and asked him for additional clarification and a breakdown of the funds that he was. Estimating that would be. The town would be liable for. Because it was imperative from, from my perspective to know. How much of it was going to be incurred and due and payable by seven one and how much of it? Could be budgeted in the subsequent year, and I wanted to make sure that. We were doing everything properly. So the bottom line is, and I believe. He responded yesterday, maybe it was Tuesday, I'm not sure.
Yesterday.
And I'm not sure if that letter was shared with the other two selectmen. I don't think I shared it.
It went to.
Went to Nancy and you, but anyway, the bottom line is he did break down that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it appears that. As I pointed out in my. Treasurers report that by the end of this fiscal year, we're going to need an additional forty six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. To satisfy the cost of this litigation. Now that's in addition to the twenty nine that we already have. Then once the seven one date kicks in, we have thirty thousand dollars in the budget. And his estimate is that there'll be seventy to seventy five thousand dollars additional expense. In the next fiscal year, so the options are going to be. To leave the budgeted. Appropriation at thirty and then. Maybe look for a budget transfer or an additional appropriation when necessary, or to increase the budgeted amount now. That's something that I guess you would discuss and we would also discuss at the Board of Finance of to see what their preference would be.
Thanks Barbara. So. So we were waiting to hear back from Board of Finance.
No, the Board of Finance wasn't able to discuss it. They got the letter. And the only thing they had was a special meeting. They have a regular meeting next week and that'll be the first time that they can discuss it as a board.
Right, and so we need to wait for them. To discuss it, I assume.
Well, I think you can discuss it in general and. Come up with whatever you think your preference would be, or if you have no preference, I don't know if it matters.
Yeah, I, I, I don't really get the sense that anything. I don't know if there's anything that's changed from the conversation that we had in executive session. With special counsel as far as. The steps, you know, where we're headed.
Right. I'm not really sure there's anything that your board needs to do at this time.
Yeah.
Regarding it.
Seven point three. Is Bonnie on? Do I see her? There, I think I just saw her, yes.
I'm here.
Hi Bonnie.
Hi.
Around the deck chairs. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Um, the reason I asked to be put on the agenda this afternoon. The fire department has created, the president has appointed a new committee. A staffing committee in particular. To look at the. Options moving forward because as you all know. We're using more and more staff. And so we wanted to look at the options. The charge of the committee is to complete a comprehensive review of the current Kent Volunteer Fire Department staffing model. Research best practice options moving forward for fire and EMS. Staffing and present an action plan to the department for possible adoption. If and when a proposal is adopted by the department, the committee is tasked to complete implementation of the action plan. I was appointed chairman of that committee and I went to the president and the fire chief. And asked them for their permission. To ask a member of the Board of Selectmen and a member of the Board of Finance. To sit on the committee with us. Basically as like an ex officio member. Since the town is the one that's footing the bill, I thought it was appropriate that. You know, members of the town government have a, a say. And, and help us in the process. So I'm here, Jean, Glenn, Rufus, to ask one of you to sit on the committee with us.
Thanks Bonnie.
And I, I'll leave it up to you to decide who.
Sure. And are you looking? For a decision from us tonight, or can we? Think about it, my, so here's my thinking, we have a bunch of committees that are. That we all are sitting on, some may be wrapping up quickly. Some maybe not wrapping up as quickly, so it may. Maybe smart for us to. Sort of evaluate where, where the group is in all of the committees.
Yeah, absolutely, that's fine. Our next meeting, I believe, is the 21st of April, so.
Okay.
Still a few.
Do you have like a goal date for a? Report or whatever, what the?
Sort of like a final outcome?
Yeah, no, okay.
So Bonnie, can I ask, do we meet monthly or weekly, or what, what, what's your schedule?
Um, right now it's been monthly.
Monthly, okay.
Yeah.
On the, on those Thursdays, so that.
No, not necessarily on that Thursday, there's a lot of. Scheduling conflicts, we'll say, so we're kind of, we try to just work around everybody's schedule.
Okay. So you're thinking monthly and how, how long do you think this will, this process will take?
I couldn't wager a guess. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to wrap it up by the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, and there, I mean, there are definitely some. Timestamps that are. Relevant, the medic for contract, the amount of time. Regulatory processes take if there were any, you know, if there were license changes or. And organizational changes, if there were, if there were any, that all takes time.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks Bonnie, we will. Get back to you definitely by our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
New. Sorry, new seven point four is. Streetscape. So this is really, there's a few things here that we're going to go through. The first is the survey. Results, so we had, we put out a survey. And it was open till the thirty first. If you give me a second, I will hop over to a screen share. Can everybody see the town of Kent sidewalk materials survey dashboard?
Yes.
Great, so. Fortunately, we have the survey monkey plan that. Takes a lot of the pain out of collating information. We received an astonishing seven hundred and twenty six responses, I was. I'm completely amazed at that response rate. Would be unheard of in a survey. When you compare it to the number of residents we have, so I built this quick dashboard just so we can all. Sort of look at the same thing and have been an easily consumable way, so. It was a very short survey, just a couple of questions, are you a, you a resident of Kent? That was that sort of honor, honesty question, and we did have a number of folks who did. Answer the no, which would bring you right to the thank you anyway. Panel, and then really the salient question here is this one, please choose one of the options below to voice your opinion to the Board of Selectmen. On the materials that should be used and. You can see there was of the seven hundred and of sixty six, six hundred and sixty one people who answered this question, which is right here. You can see eighty five percent answered, I prefer, prefer the BOs choose concrete as a material for the sidewalks and fifteen percent. I prefer the BOs choose asphalt as the material for the sidewalks. We did additionally get in a large number of. Of comments to the board and those were all. Organized. By Survey Monkey. And if, if folks wanted to view that dashboard, if you go to the meeting agenda. The clickable link is right in the meeting agenda, so you can look at the survey results and you can scroll through the. All of the comments. So again. Big, big thanks to our residents for. Really sort of not only answering the. The survey, but also. Clearly it was shared around a lot, so I think it, it speaks to the engagement that folks want in town. So the next piece is seven point four point two, which is. The three recommendations that the, one of three recommendations that the streetscape committee made. And Mike, if you don't mind, I'm gonna. Rearrange the deck chairs here and put you on spotlight, have the chair of the streetscape committee join us in the conversation. I can find him, I know he's here. Oh, you're the phone number, gotcha, thanks.
Can you get a computer to work?
Oh, and you know what, I can't spotlight you because you're a dial in, but that's okay, we know you're out there. So the first recommendation. Was Joyce, do we have that in the folder? The recommendations from the streetscape committee, that was one thing I did not have.
Was in the last meeting that we had.
Okay. Me one second to go grab that. Technology is vexing me, hang on one second. Sorry, everybody. Ready. Okay, I think I got it. Okay, so Mike, I'm putting up on the screen share your email from March fifteenth. And in the first recommendation, so this is going to be our first consideration. His recommendation was recommend the board, or I'm sorry, the committee's recommendation was recommend the Board of Selectmen award. The phase one project to the Mather Corporation and the. Also included was they are fully qualified and of the three bidders, they had the only complete bid package. Mather Corporation also happened to be the low bidder, so I will put that in a form of a motion. To accept the recommendation of the streetscape committee and award the phase one project. To the Mather Corporation.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion and Mike, I'm gonna. Just give you a, a second if you have anything to add to this specific. Discussion for the motion.
I, I don't have any, any change in that, I think that they're, they're a good option and. You should stick with it if you. Wish.
Okay, thank you. So we will vote on that motion, all those in favor? I. Fantastic, thank you. The second recommendation was from the committee was to recommend the Board of Selectmen choose asphalt sidewalks. As opposed to concrete sidewalks, or, and I'm just gonna. If folks. Board, do you want me to read these? The points, we have reviewed this before. It's up to you.
I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm okay, don't.
Okay, I am gonna afford Mike a minute to just provide comment as the chair.
Well, I'm. Echoing for some reason, I'm sorry. Are you hearing me okay?
You're good.
We hear you fine.
I had a whole letter to read. This, what's up in front of everybody here? Tells it all like it is. The committee stated. I agree with the fact. I think that. Those who consider it a waste of money are, are not truly thinking of the. True value of going with asphalt versus concrete. And it's been proven. You know, over the, over time, the value is the value. This, my first and foremost thing has always been safety. I can't, you know, I, I can't stress enough. That the, the blacktop is a far more safe surface, it's a better value. It thaws out faster when it's in the winter time, it definitely freezes slower. Concrete is extremely slippery. And, you know, I'm not gonna. Read the second draft that I had sent you. The first draft wasn't good. So. I saw your results of your survey. There's, you know, there's one that was. A, a very misleading email that I thought should be addressed. Cost of concrete was the label, the cost was calculated. Who knows where, but it, it wasn't calculated by. The, the real numbers that were given through the bids. And. You know, you probably know which one it is, the title of the, of that email was cost of concrete. It came from a member of our. Board of Finance. The numbers aren't even close to real. So I, I can't tell you how much misinformation I've seen in some of the emails. And I have stated facts. And so has our committee, we spent four years working on this. And just for your, just to let you know, the sidewalk from. Current sidewalk from the north of, north of the Kent Green to the community house, this blacktop, as everyone knows. It's about twenty years old. The last committee recommended not even touching it because it's still in good shape. And it's blacktop. Another misreading email that I just saw a quick glance of here before. Is how we would be defacing our wonderful little. New England town by putting blacktop down. My question to. The many, many people who sent in emails who are new or have moved to this town. What were the sidewalks when they moved here? Blacktop. We're not defacing it, we're improving it. The old blacktop that is there and on Main Street is probably forty years old. And yes, it's been patched several times. Everybody knows that. It's cracked, but it's old. Everybody sees that and then everybody sees the new concrete ramps that the state put in. Well, the. The blacktop has lasted and it served its life's purpose. The biggest problem with. Most of the sidewalks in town is, well, there are several. One is they get driven on. Not a parking lot, they're a sidewalk. In front of the church across the street from the Catholic Church, they get driven on. On the, on the east, on the east side of Route seven, just north of the light in front of the restaurant, they get driven on. They're not made for cars. The new sidewalks will have granite curbing, which will prevent that from happening. When somebody cuts into our sidewalks, there should be a permit process, no matter what you choose. Whether it's concrete or blacktop. Or asphalt. There should be a very strict permitting process with a very strict bond in place. To make sure that the patching is done properly. Again, however you choose. You should consider that as well. This, and this is me speaking, this and I can't speak for my committee because we have not met concerning this conversation. The last thing I can say is, you know, is. You know, I. With the inconsistencies and that one letter, cost of concrete, well, yes. The cost of concrete in the last year has gone up twenty two dollars per yard. Guess how much blacktop has gone up per ton, which covers about the same area. Ten dollars. It's just the cost alone are are way more for concrete. I'm a concrete guy for since nineteen eighty six, I've been working in the concrete field and placing concrete. You have an experienced concrete person. Asking you not to use concrete for sidewalks. I know it costs more to fix. I know it costs more to replace, and I know it costs more to put down. In this particular project, which is only from the monument and tent north to the. Just before the community house and from the monument west to the bridge. It's a quarter million dollar difference. Everybody knows that. It's been stated. I think the town, after sitting through last night's finance meeting, board of finance meeting, the town needs every bit of money it can get. I don't see, just because, I don't think just because the money has been appropriated. And I know we don't, for phase one, two point nine million is not needed because nine hundred thousand of the. Either one point seven or one point four something. If you go with the asphalt. Is nine hundred thousand is covered by two grants. All I can say now is. I, I think it's nice that you somehow. Some way, seven hundred and twenty six people sent emails to your survey. I find that. Very, very. Concerning because there are that many people concerned about the sidewalks and I'm really surprised. But happy that that many people were able to. To join in. I'm not gonna go into something else I thought there. Serious consideration should be, should be considered to. Professionals who have been asked to volunteer and spend four years of their time. Recommend to you what the way to go. That's all I can say.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Sure. Rufus Glenn.
I want to thank Mike and the entire committee and all those who have been on this project for so long. I mean, this is just. Me coming here on the tail end, making some kind of decision. I want to thank you all. You've put in a lot of time and a lot of effort and. I appreciate the passion. I appreciate the care for this town. So thank you, Mike, and everybody else.
Thank you.
I think we all echo that for sure and. I do owe Mike, I owe you a bit of an apology at the, at a previous meeting. After you had given your report as the chair, I did allow another member. Of the committee to speak and that was probably, that was improper of me. You're the representative for the committee, so. I, I do apologize for that. Sure. So we need to move forward on the materials. The streetscape committee's recommendation was. To go with asphalt and. While I have huge respect for that committee and the committees that came before. There's. I think there's a lot of reasons that support going with concrete. The math that I did on the Mather Corporation. Bid alternatives with the concrete bid at one point seven six two million, the deduct. And the asphalt bid at one point five oh six. It was only, I think, a fifteen thousand, fifteen percent. Difference and while being. You know. We have to be fiscally responsible. We are here to, you know, guide the process, guide. You know, take all the information and take in the, the recommendation from the streetscape committee and take in the, the. Feedback from the public. I, I would. I would make a motion to. Accept the Mather Corporation concrete bid. At one point seven six two million dollars. For the phase one project.
Second.
So we'll have some discussion.
Well. I mean, I, I was. Stated in our debate that I was for concrete at that point, a lot of what. You know, and I know that the. Person spoke for the other side from the committee, you know, was also very passionate. You know, it was, it was not a unanimous decision. But from. I think that. Yes, it was history, what the town was, but we're not there, we're today. Think you have to respect the number of people who came out and. And spoke their piece and, and. Seems like today's population is strongly. In favor of concrete. So I. You know, I, I. I know Mike is very, very passionate about. What he does and he's good at it, but. I also, at this point, have to. Go with concrete.
Thanks, Rufus. And I think, you know, we're all sort of, three of us are sort of shifting in our seats because we have huge respect. For the work that you all have done and the six of you all come with so much experience. It's, you know. It's tough not to. It's tough for me to make that motion and. Go in a different direction, but I don't want to, I don't want to steal any, any voice of Glenn if you wanted to.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, in my short time in this office, this, so far. This has been the issue that I think people have been the most passionate about. I mean, getting all of those emails before our last meeting. Doing the survey and seeing so many survey results, so many people. Wanting their voice heard and honestly, just walking down the street. More people have talked to me about this particular issue than any other issue. I mean, I, I just. Just go into the store and people will, will tell me, you know, what they would want for material for the, for the sidewalks. It's been, it's, it's been constant and, and people. People are pretty passionate about what they want and, and that's, you know, again, I have all respect for Mike and his, and his team and everybody. And the expertise, which I do not have in this, in this area, but, but I'm hearing, what I hear from so many people is concrete.
You're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. I had a little coughing fit there for a second. I. I think we've heard a lot of public feedback in the form of the. Emails that we received in the form of the. You know, the survey results. I am, I think we're ready to vote. Are you all ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion? I. Thank you. Just need to get back to where. I left off. We have a third recommendation from the committee. Now I just have to find that again. Let's see. Nation reads, recommend the board of selectmen research and hire either a retired engineer or equivalent. To oversee the day to day operations of the phase one project. Mike Doherty said during our meeting, he could likely recommend such a person, so. Mike. I'm, I know the, the term clerk of the works and I assume that's what you all are referring to. Would that be accurate?
He might left the meeting.
Oh, he left the meeting. Okay, so. They, the discussion at the streetscape meeting was. Being able to hire someone who would be able to have an eye on the ground for the day to day. Work that's going to be done by Mather Corporation and hiring a clerk of the works would, would. Obviously be the way to go, so we would. We can work with. Rick and Will work with the committee to drop a. Pretty straightforward RFP that we would post and. Go through a hiring process for a clerk of the works. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
And.
I also think that, I mean, that wasn't part of the original recommendation, but what Mike said just now. Makes sense that we explore. You know, whether. It becomes part of the permit process or whatever for cutting into. A new sidewalk, how we're going to deal with that. I think that's makes a lot of sense. So we should keep that in the back of our minds.
Can we modify the charge of the streetscape committee? To reflect that?
I'm, I don't know if we would need to, let me find the. Charge.
I would think part of that committee would be. You know. We'd need some input from. Building permit. Office and things like that.
Yeah, so the charges oversee the building process of the streetscape project and make recommendations to the BOS on how to implement the plan. Within the budget as proposed by the town of Kent. So I think that encompasses.
Think so, okay.
So that was. So would, we probably should make a motion for that. Because that was a formal recommendation from the streetscape committee, so I'll make a motion. That. The selectmen's office will draft a, an RFP to be shared. For the, for clerk of the works to be shared with the building committee. Does that? Makes succinct sense?
With the building committee?
For them to, to review. And so, okay, so I apologize, Joyce, I'm gonna rescind my motion. So that we can have a conversation about this. So in theory, we would want their expert. Input, right? We've got six subject matter experts. We would work to create this RFP, very brief RFP that would go out. So that we could post a job. But I think that we would want the streetscape committee to have a look at it before we send it out, just to make sure that. We're covering everything that we should be covering. I am no construction expert. I used to help build stores at the, a big retailer, but. Did not do construction there and did a little bit of, of that sort of thing, but. Nothing that I would feel comfortable just whipping up an RFP. I think they should have a look at it.
Agreed.
So how do we, what's the, what's the process you want for this? This motion, so the, I'll work with Joyce and Rick. We'll do a little, you know, outreach to see what, what a clerk of the works RFP generally has on it. We may have, I don't know if we have an old one from transfer station or from another project. And then we would send it over to the streetscape committee.
Or review or. Amendment, yeah, sounds good.
Yep.
Putting something in writing here. Putting something in writing here. How about, um, we get their feedback? So with, and this is not a motion, it's just a, a draft, uh, language. Um, with feedback from the streetscape committee. Draft an RFP for clerk of the works to be posted to fill that position, something like that. Anyhow.
So do we need a motion for this or, or not? What, what do we, what are we looking for here?
Uh, yeah, that was sort of a, um, a draft of the, the motion, um, and the. The hiring process, um. So we would post that position for a, a certain timeframe. It's usually two weeks. And do you want me to, I can work with Rick and we can bring back the. I don't think you need to, Donna Hayes said, I don't think you need to make a motion to state that you'll work with Joyce and Rick to, oops. To come up.
Just make a motion to. Agree to look into hiring somebody to oversee the day-to-day. We're basically agreeing with the committee on their third recommendation. So, you know, if you're gonna make a motion at all, just make a motion to accept the third recommendation of the sub. Streetscapes committee to. Pursue hiring a clerk of the works and then you and Rick and whatnot. Pursue what you need to do and, and then clear it with the.
Fantastic. So I will make a motion to accept the third recommendation of the streetscape committee and to hire a clerk of the works. Second.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alrighty, all those in favor? Thank you, thank you. Alrighty, moving on to the new, um, seven point five social services director hiring subcommittee. Rufus and his team did a fantastic job. Samantha started. Two days ago, two days ago yesterday, yesterday. Um, she was at the food bank this morning. She'll be at the food bank tomorrow morning. She is super excited to be here. We're very excited. To have her, um, and I will make a motion to disband the social services. Director hiring subcommittee with, with, thanks. Alrighty, all those in favor? Again, thanks so much for your work on that.
Yeah, um. Ruth and Catherine were excellent committee members, so.
Awesome.
On the record.
Thanks, awesome. So the new seven point six, um, is the salary review. Do I have that numbering right? I think I got it right. Um, so this is a follow-up to our conversation and many of the budget. Conversations about. Process to really give a review across the board of the salaries, um. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it tonight, but I, we do need to figure out what's, what's gonna be the plan in order to move forward with. With this. There, we did discuss reviewing that, uh, the original, um. Management review that was done in, I think, two thousand. Eighteen, two thousand sixteen, Joyce, help me out.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Um, so we can pull that documentation together. Send it out to the group. And at the next meeting, we'll review that, um. But we, you know, I'd like to come up with some sort of, um. Plan rhythm so that we can get through this. Do we need to reach out? Do we wanna reach out to CCM? To see if they can, um, offer us somebody to provide us with some guidance. There are a number of salary surveys out there. There are national salary surveys, state cog. Um, there's a lot, there, there potentially are a lot of moving parts. So, um. It's really how we wanna proceed.
I don't think tonight, I'm, you know, I, I wanna make this. An important thing we do, but I don't think tonight is the night to. Try to start formalizing things.
Yep.
Um. I, I feel like we're still in the middle of the budget and that's a. You know, but it is a priority for me to make sure that all the salaries in town are equitable and. So I think each of us have, has to individually think about how the process might work, what we think and, and then come back and. Throw ideas on the table and see what. We can. Put together between. All of our ideas.
Okay, um, how about if we first starters pull together the management review and any of the supporting documentation we'll send it out?
That would be great.
Yes, you can do that.
Agreed.
Moving to number eight. Eight point one, uh, old business assessor and tax collector computer issue update. I, um. Just looking to see who's on the call. I haven't had any, um. Any, anything further from them? Is Deb on the call? I thought I saw Debbie DeVoe on the call.
No, she, no.
Um, I haven't, and Joyce, you haven't, we, we chatted briefly this afternoon. Um, she hasn't heard any. Follow-up on issues. Joyce, do we have any, um. Any update on the, um, fiber? I know there was, Yuck, Ucatet had turned you over to see the CEN folks.
She's supposed to be sending you a contract.
Okay. I will. Um, I guess I'll follow up with Wendy. Um, next is, uh, Swift House. So I'm, um, Joyce, this was, this is on the, um. The agenda, should this be moved out to the second? Meeting of the month?
I don't believe this is the committee's report. I believe that this is the status of the use of the building.
Okay, so I had a long conversation with the folks at CHRO today and, uh, one of the attorneys there. And, um, while I learned some interesting information, it did not, um, it, there were no easy answers. Because they are, they're really the sort of, they're the complaint, they're a complaint-based, um, agency and she. There wasn't a lot of, um. Pearls of wisdom as far as can we use the building? Can we not use the building? So I've asked, um. Randy, a number of weeks ago to, there's something in the ADA law about. Um, an exemption, a historical exemption. So I'm hopeful that he will provide us with an advisory on whether or not this building. Um, would come under one of these, uh, under this exemption in the ADA. So that's, I don't, I don't have anything else on that. This evening. And then there, you know, we did get that information from Karma, the information, the original information from, um. Uh, from Randy some weeks ago and probably more than a month ago at this point.
I could, uh, I can just say that, um, uh, the Swift House Task Force Committee, we met yesterday, right, yesterday at the house. Uh, and, um, you know, we, uh, we were there with Joe Manley, Stan McMillan. Um, and, uh, and the whole group, you know, Joyce, and it was, it was a good meeting. We, uh, we, we were, we went in there, we, uh, we talked about the issues. We talked a lot about ADA, uh, and, um, you know, uh, both, both of those gentlemen, Joe and Stan, they told us, uh, you know, what they needed. Um, they asked us a lot of questions about what the committee is thinking, uh, because they couldn't answer a lot of questions unless we knew. What the building would be used for, um, you know, it goes back and forth, uh, with, with all of this, but, but at the very least. Um, uh, you know, with no change of use. Um, if, um, if we were, if someone were to use this, this office, uh, we talked about what. What the bare minimum, what the minimum would be needed for ADA approval. Uh, and, um, and, and the committee is looking into that. We're looking into, you know, who, who, who could, who could do that job? How much it would, it would cost? Uh, and all that. So, so however Randy, you know, whatever Randy says to us eventually here, whether it's, you know, sooner or later. Uh, either way, I think, you know, the committee is, is, is definitely thinking ADA approval to keep the town, um. You know, not, not liable first for, for something, uh, so, uh, so I, I think, I think that's where. That's the direction we're looking, looking towards, uh, at the moment, but, um, but we, we are still going to meet, I think next week, we're meeting monthly. Uh, and, um, I'll have a report the next time we meet about what we talk about there, so.
Ready. Eight point three. Operating budget, so we, um, the board of finance met last night. I. I anticipate that the board of finance at their meeting next, they're, they're tentatively, tentatively have a meeting. For next Wednesday. Um, I expect them to send budget back to us. And because timing is super tight, where on that, um, April twentieth. They're going to be meeting and, um, making their final, um, decision. So we need to be able to get two meetings between now and. Uh, Tuesday, the nineteenth. So if we can pull out our calendars, I'm going to propose. We schedule one for Thursday, April fourteenth. So board of finance will be meeting that night. That's when I'm expecting they will, um. Toss that football back to us so that we can, if we can meet, uh, Thursday sometime between four and six. There's a lot of other, um. Conflicts and meetings that day, so, um. That would be, I think, a, an optimal, an optimal timeframe, and then we'll go to one for the nineteenth. But, um, starting doing this one at a time.
Fourteen, sorry, Glenn, go ahead.
So just, just to, um, so this would be a special meeting for us to talk about just the, uh, just the budget and. Anticipated cuts we may have to make.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's advisable based on that meeting last night and, uh.
So between four and six, can we, um. Four thirty, because I, in the meantime, I got a confirmation about the annual, like, warmog inter-local meeting. Um, in the afternoon, so four thirty would probably be optimal for me.
Four forty-five. I'm not sure I can get back. I have a doctor's appointment in the morning.
Then we could do five. You all, and there's a Main Street meeting that night and a P and Z.
Four forty-five is good for me.
When this four forty-five work?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, so we'll do four forty-five on the fourteen. And then, um, the second one would need to be Tuesday, April nineteenth.
Afternoon for me.
Toss out a time, what works?
I, I could do. I could do.
One, two, three.
Uh, three or four.
Okay, so why don't we start with three? Rufus, is that work, just three o'clock work for you?
Um, Tuesday, the nineteenth.
Yes.
Will be tight, but I can.
Does later make it worse or better?
Uh, like, again, like, three fifteen, I usually.
So why don't we do three thirty?
Be thirty.
Give you a second to take your coat off. Well, hopefully by then you won't be wearing a coat, but take a breath and. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh. We'll be able to have Barbara. At that meeting, cause she is, um, in the office on Tuesdays. Great, thank you. Um, I have nothing new for Capitol, um, that. Went, that part of the conversation went pretty smoothly. Uh, town hall meeting room, uh, large meeting room video conference system. Um, Joyce and I were talking this afternoon and. So in the, in the world of Zoom, um, even though it's been, uh, you know, two, almost two and a half years. We need to be able to make whatever system that we put in place, we need to make it. Um, to use a horsey term, bomb-proof, so that every level of literacy, tech literacy user. Can walk into the room and not need Joyce to come run downstairs and can you set up this device? Or this isn't working or, um, any, not one of a number of, um, variables that. That she might have to troubleshoot and while she's willing to help with anything, um, I would. Would you agree with me, Joyce, that, um, technology is not your, um. Your sweet spot? Um, and, and it, you know, again, we wanna. We wanna be able to have this system so that it, it just runs. Um, so that somebody doesn't have to bring their own laptop, somebody doesn't have to swap out a, um. Projector, what have you, so. You know, that's gonna mean spending a little bit more money than, than doing a sort of DIY version. Um, the owl, as Matt Winter, um. I think was alluding to that the ARPA committee has been using, that's the land trusts, um. It works well in small conference, conference rooms, um. I was looking on their website, cause the fire department uses an owl as well. It does start to, um. Dilute when you get into a big room and that room has everything going against it when it comes to especially audio. Um, the size of the room, the hut, the, the ceiling, the, the way that the roof line runs. It's, you know, and it's audio's worst nightmare. So I'm not sure that an owl would. Or even two owls would be sufficient for that room. But that also doesn't include the monitors, you know, we would need a large TV upfront, we'd need, you know, one on each side. Cause the room is just too big to not have that. Um, and really it's all, this is all about the funding. Where are we gonna get the money to do this? Um, Joyce has put in a request through the ARPA committee for, was it twenty thousand dollars, Joyce? Um, so we, you know. We're gonna wait to hear what they. Um, say, but there, there are bills in the legislature that are gonna codify this. And we need to, this is long overdue, we need to, um. We need to make this happen, but the funding is the, is the pinch point.
It's actually. we need a concrete materials list before, you know, the funding comes, so that's, to me, step one. I think the town should invest in an owl for small meeting rooms. I think that's a really good solution for the smaller subcommittees and stuff, I mean. But you got to come up with a specifics as to what exactly it is that you want chopped out, and then we need to go get three quotes and go from there.
So Joyce did that a number of months ago. That was, when was that, Joyce, December?
Well, it started over a year ago, but I.
I would think those numbers are probably outdated by now with what's happened with.
I don't disagree, but I cannot continue to go back to the same contractors three and four times, getting lists when I don't have a budget, and I don't have funds to even sup, to, to be able to do the project. So I'm asking people, and they're providing these, and then I just sit on it. I, I, in good conscience, can't go back to them for a third or fourth time.
Glenn, do you have any, not to put you in a crystal ball moment, but do you have any indication on when the committee may be coming back with a report?
We, we were unable to meet yesterday, but it's where, it's still in works. I mean, we're still, we're still trying to hammer out a bunch of issues, and we were hoping it would be, you know, relatively soon, but it might be later. So I, I really can't give you a timeframe, really. What I, what I can say is that having, having attended Board of Finance meetings, seeing that hybrid work, and have, and being a part of ARPA, where, where we've been in hybrid with that, with that owl, that, that seems to have worked very well, so, so we heard Matt earlier today. And, you know, and I know people who have been, you know, in that hybrid meeting have, have, have had a good experience with that. It's, it's about a thousand dollars. So a, a, at the very least, you know, I, I know one, two, or three owls aren't going to solve the large meeting room, but maybe we can solve a, a smaller meeting room. I don't know if we can find funds for $999. I'm looking at it right here on my screen, an owl.
Right, but the topic that we're, we're actually talking about, the Town Hall Large Meeting Room.
Which we've been talking about for months, and I, I don't know, I, I, I mean, everything that's been said has been said already, so it's, we need to find the funding to do it. So, if we do that, so. And that's $8,000 that I last saw, months ago, so.
So I, Joyce, I think unfortunately, we're at the point where we should probably get new numbers.
New numbers for what? The large room or the small?
For the large room, because that's what this is talking about.
Okay. And Donna has her hand up.
Go ahead, Donna.
I just, as, you know, someone who does large meetings, you know, sometimes we have, the large meeting room is full with people sitting. I, I won't hold my meetings unless I have, unless there's a setup in that large meeting room that is going to provide audio that was better than that Board of Finance meeting that was held down there. I don't know if you ever tried to listen to the audio from that meeting, but it was absolutely atrocious.
Right.
And the way that the Planning and Zoning Commission operates, if there's a lawsuit, one of the things, the first things that I have to do are verbatim minutes, and if I can't hear what's being said, the case could be lost, and, and that could cost the town thousands and thousands of dollars, because the judge couldn't hear, actually see what was said, because of the verbatim minutes. So until you get that room set up, and, and, and I, I really do ask that you spend as much as you need to spend to make it work, I'm going to continue to have Zoom meetings, because I just can't risk the possibility of lawsuits. It, it just,
Right.
That's my job. So I'm just asking, try to get the money, I don't care where you get it from, everybody seems to be able to find money for everything else. This needs to be done. If it had been done while we were under executive order, we wouldn't have had to have paid a penny for this, so it's been long enough. It, it has been, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. And I, you know, that's a really, really compelling reason, right? But we also are municipal government. We're not, you know, a, a local public theater, we're not a, you know, a, a small civic organization. We are the municipal government, and we, we should have the, the appropriate, proper equipment, so that people can attend meetings, and so that we can record meetings. I, I completely agree with Donna that we can't, this is not a, a time to DIY something, it's not a time to skim. So we'll come back. Joyce will get updated quotes, and we will come back to the next meeting, and if it, you know, we're going to have to, we need to make a decision at the next meeting. And if that decision is, involves going to the town for a supplemental budget appropriation, then we need to be prepared to, to make that decision. Darlene, you have your hand up?
I do, and I guess it's just to reiterate in a different way what Donna was expressing, but the Board of Selectmen just passed a resolution that requires all boards and commissions to record their meetings. You made that a requirement, and the, the bill that's online, right now, that's addressing FOI and meetings, it doesn't look like it's changing as far as the responsibility to technology and the need for recording of meetings. So ultimately, somehow you have to support even your resolution. You put forward upon the boards and commissions, this is a requirement, and now what you've done is put them in a position to not even be able to do what you've asked of them. You've not given them the tools to do that. So I think, you know, COVID being where it is, and, and more and more boards and commissions are going to want to meet in person, it's, it's no longer that you can keep saying, we have to keep looking at, or these are the reasons why. It should have gone hand in hand when you were thinking about passing that resolution, but it was a responsibility to support this, no matter what the expense was.
I just need to have some specific numbers in front of me that are, you know, not, not many months old before I can vote. I agree that we've, we've put everybody in position to have to record, so we, it's up to us to get the system, but let's have some concrete numbers in front of us so that we can move forward.
And even if we get the concrete numbers, let's say the concrete number's 8,000, or nine, or seven, that's great. Where are we going to get that money from? Like, I, 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 I mean, are we going to have to go to the town anyway? I, I, I mean, do we have any idea where this money might come from? I mean, I just threw out the owl because it's under a thousand. Maybe we can find that easily, but if we're talking the large meeting room, we're talking thousands of dollars, this is a big expense, no matter what the numbers are, and we've been talking about this for a long time. So where do we think we're going to get the money from this? Because if we're hoping for ARPA, that's, you know, again, that's a hope whenever we get this report done. Do we have another plan? This has been on the agenda for many months. And Darlene's right. We said we have to, you know, all boards and commissions have to, have to record this. Let's give them the tools. We have to find out sooner than later.
I think we're all agreeing on the same same concept, so why don't we move on, and we'll get the quotes, and we, we have to move forward at the next meeting. Eight point six, emergency management proposal. This is, I think this was just sort of a, a leftover, but it does, you know, part of the proposal was these four plans that the updated local emergency operation plan, pandemic plan COO, and the cyber plan. You see Eric is on the meeting. That was all removed from the, their budget proposal. That was 32,500 for those four pieces. Eric, do you have any, a comment? I sorry.
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay. So here's another, you know, this is, these are plans that our town needs to, to protect them, to be able to plan for all the different various emergencies that may happen, so. Not sure what else there is to say about it. So we're just going to move on to eight point seven, Emergency Management Director and Deputy Emergency Management Director Job Descriptions, so those are in the folder. Those came, they're based on, so the EMPG, which is the Emergency Management Planning, Planning Grant, I just forgot what that stands for, but it's the pass-through from the feds to Demis Grant, where we get $5,000 for having a local emergency operations plan. Within that paperwork that they provide, they have also provided sample job descriptions, and Rufus, I don't know, it's probably been a while since you've heard, heard the acronym NIMS, so NIMS is the National Incident Management System, which is the framework for which all of incident command lives, and the terminology deputy, what that, what that defines is a position, whether if it was in the fire service, a deputy chief, or in this, in this case, a deputy emergency management director, means that that person, that position needs to be capable of replacing the primary position. So it is different from an assistant emergency management director, right? So there's a distinction. So that's why when you look at the two job descriptions, they're very close, because one has, the deputy has to be able to just automatically step in for the other. And that's by design in the national, the federal, federal framework, the state framework. It's a standard.
For point of clarification, Eric was appointed the Emergency Management Deputy back in November, not the Deputy Emergency Management Director.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to go back and listen to the meeting, but the, the name of the position is Deputy Emergency Management Director. I don't think it makes any difference whether the thing is at the front or is at the back. He's, it's not an assistant position, it's a deputy position. Which refers back to the, the NIMS, the federal standard for the, the titles. Eric, can you fill in any gaps on this?
On the job description?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just pulling them up.
That's okay. So also, I had sent them off to, back to John Field, who's the regional coordinator for Demis. For him to have the team at Demis look at, and they sent it back with a couple of minor revisions, all of which I included. And so they have their, you know, they have a whole legal team at Demis, and they took a look at it and just had a couple of suggestions, because it basically came from their template.
The, the only comment is that, you know, there's, there's two sections of training here. It's the Incident Management, and then the FEMA training, it'd be, you know, Emergency Management Training.
So is that, is there, are you suggesting some sort of edit or change, or are you just sort of?
No, no, it's just outlined in there. I, I was just explaining the outline. So what are we doing with these drafts right now?
So we need to adopt them as we've done with most other job descriptions?
Yeah, I, I, these are three plus pages long, both of them, and they were not in, in the file this morning, and I have not read through these, so I, I'd like to take a look at them, I'd like to have time, and I'd like to make a decision of some kind, but, but are we, are, are, so, so we're going to a job, adopt, adopt job descriptions for, for these two particular volunteer positions? Is that true?
Yes.
That's the point of this?
Yes, and that's at the, you know, in the EMPG documentation, they recommend creating these, creating job descriptions for the positions.
Yeah, I need to, more time to be able to read these.
Okay.
I agree with Glenn.
Okay, so we'll keep this on for the next meeting. Onto eight point eight, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So give me one second to recognize myself. So the CAG has, there's a number of, I don't know what the word is. They work with a number of consultants and offer up some regional consulting for big, big plans, like the Hazard Mitigation Plan. FEMA requires a revision of the plan, I think it's every five years. It is a very large plan, and the, the consultant was SLR that, and they, they follow a very sort of standard process for walking through each town, taking each town. It's sort of like the Affordable Housing Plan, where we have a consultant and she's walking us through a process, sort of like the POCD, right, walking through a process to, to revise these plans. Everything is based on the, the rules that come down from FEMA, and it's a multi, multi-jurisdictional plan that has background information on the region, on different hazard types, plan development, and schedules. So what, what's in your folders is I took the Kent plan, so they have done this for all the towns, and instead of giving you a, I think it's 1,896-page document that includes everything from Barkshamsted to whatever the W is, Washington or Warren or somebody, I extracted Kent out from that. So there's the multi-jurisdictional plan from which I extracted us. There are the plan appendancies, which is background information. It also flows you through the, the meeting notes that SLR takes, any Um, any exposure analysis information and that's in that um appendices, appendix rather. Um, there is embedded in the plan, a uh one-page fact sheet that's got a um. Sort of an executive summary kind of um look and feel to it, but it's a a very concise wrap-up. And then there's also a community annex that has community-specific information about risks and risk areas. Municipal capabilities, progress made in hazard mitigation over time, and any new actions recommended for the coming five years. So the, we need to, there's also um a resolution that we need to pass. That is a um blanket resolution that comes right from SLR. They prepare it for all the towns. And um, I believe I, did I put that in the folder, Joyce? It's a, it's a template um resolution. And so we need to um. It's basically to adopt the plan. So FEMA needs to hear from us that we've adopted the new Hazard Mitigation Plan that will take us from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven. So I will make a motion to waive the reading of the Hazard Mitigation Adoption. Plan. Did I get that right? Go back to my notes that I, where I wrote this. Give me a second for that. Second to get at least a discussion.
Second.
Thank you.
God, I was muted.
So again, this is a um. You know, something that has been worked on, I think it's over a year, that the consultant's been working on it. It's an important document to really. You know. Anybody who's dealing with, um, you know, it's obviously important to. Emergency management from the hazard mitigation standpoint. It's emergent, it's important to land use because it deals with all the different natural hazards that. We all worry about flooding, um. Erosion. And we would, I would like to get this back to the CAG so they they can pass it on up to um. To FEMA so that we can um let them know that we've completed this loop.
I mean, I'm sure this is all very important and all very, you know, and all very, you know, we gotta get this done quickly, but um. Again, there's a one document here that's a hundred and eighty-nine pages. I know you chopped it down from a thousand. So the document that's seventy um and um. Another that's nine uh i- i- in these uh, some of these documents. And I didn't see this this morning. I certainly um. You know, I I I hadn't seen any of this stuff until just before the meeting, so um.
So this is not a plan that I write. This is a plan that the consultant wrote and they they are. Um, they do this, they've, you know, this right, this go around, they did it for, I think it was nine. Nine or eleven towns all at the same time. So they're using a template to make sure their boxes that they have to check for. You know, and they're they're doing it on our behalf, right? So the CAG affords us this, you know, in being members of the CAG. Having this consultant to take on this heavy lift, if we had to do this ourselves, it would. It would cost a fortune.
Uh, so Mike, I I got a couple of other questions. So this is, does this happen every five years? So this is a five-year plan. So so the next time around, it'll be five years that we agree to something like this. So, okay, so this hasn't been done for five years, like what we're about to do.
Um, it may have been longer, I'm not sure. I think there was a, there was a gap with the last round, but I'd have to go back and look.
So this extremely long one is dated January. Twenty twenty-two.
Yep, they have to have a comment period. I'd have to look it up, but they have a, there's a comment period where SLR puts it out for comment, which. Which follows a FEMA, you know, all the FEMA guidance that comes with having to do these plans. We had a meeting. Probably a year ago with the consultant. Which, and it included a whole bunch of stakeholders, so it included land use, it included emergency management, fire department. Uh, Public Works, I think Sewer. Um, all the different stakeholders that would come together for a plan like this.
I mean, could uh could could we have, could we have two weeks to just look at this? I mean, I'm sure this is gonna be fine, but does this have to happen this instant?
If you need two weeks. By all means. So adopting the plan will um. Continue to make us eligible for FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Programs, which is another federal program where we can get grant money. As well as the BRIC. Uh, Building. Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant through FEMA as well. I think that's the name of that.
So I mean, we 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 currently have a plan. I mean, it's not like, you know, if if we take. I mean, this, this was done in January, you know, and it's it's now April. I mean, uh, you know, if there's like a two-week stretch here, I mean, we're not like. Leaving ourselves open to some kind of problem. We have no hazard mitigation plan, right? I mean, we currently have one. And this is, this is an update, this is.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so this, it would have been two thousand twenty-two, twenty-one. Team, so it would have been two thousand seventeen would have been the last time that. The CAG would have come or FEMA would have come to the town to do this plan. It's a five-year plan, they come usually the year before. And again, I believe there was a gap, I I. Sitting right here, I don't, I don't have any details on that for you. And in, you know, part of the documentation that SLR provides as far as talking points, one of the talking points. Um, reads mitigation actions suggested in the plan are not mandates. These are projects and programs that should be undertaken. When funding allows, ideal some, ideally someone would make note of the status of each action, action at least once per year. So these are, you know, very um. Long-term planning. And again, these are, you know, this is a template, it's all there are very specific deliverables that FEMA requires to have in these plans. But if, so we can move on, we can move it to the next. The next meeting, or we could move it to one of those two meetings that we have planned in the next two weeks.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, the next, the next meeting is perfectly fine. Um, you know.
Rufus says, are you there as well?
Yeah, I kind of got caught up in the tornado section.
If you're reading.
But but it it's, it is somewhat interesting. So I will, Joyce, I will rescind my motion and Rufus, if you could rescind the second.
Second, rescind the second.
Eight point nine COVID pandemic update. So over, we get the case reports weekly from Torontary Health Department. Our previous two weeks are, uh, we've had zero cases, but we um did receive a. Letter um. That Region One sent out, uh, it looks like they had a, you know, maybe a bit of a cluster and. We had one case, I think, in that um that letter. There is concern, obviously, the the numbers are creeping back up a little bit with the new variant, so we're keeping an eye on that. Test site remains open three to six Tuesday and Thursday. Um. I anticipate the the state will discontinue that and, you know, demo that organization that has been running those. Um, we do have plenty of test kits, home test kits in the office. We've had a a fair number of people in the last week coming in to get them. And always have masks in the lobby of the um Town Hall. Jared is also gonna have a table at the Extravaganza. On hopefully Saturday, as long as the weather cooperates, where we'll um, we'll have test kits and masks available for people. Um, who would like to take them. Um, the Betty update. Uh, we have a, I have a Zoom meeting uh tomorrow with the folks at Community Health and Wellness. To just work out some of the details, uh, nuts and bolts to move forward and we will do a, they'll come here to do a site visit. Um, next week to talk about potential sites. Um, I think for right now, we're probably focusing on um. Somewhere near the Welcome Center so that they can have use of the public bathrooms for any um, you know, testing that. That they um need to do, so they do need, you know, access to bathrooms.
Good.
So that continues to move forward and I will keep you posted. And, yes.
I'm sorry, um, just to let you know, um, the Architecture Review Board just approved the other night a large. Landscaping plan that's gonna be taking place. Um, where the railroad car is, that 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 section.
Okay.
So there's gonna be a lot of um activity in that area. I would say probably over the next month at least.
Oh, that's great to know. Thank you.
They're not gonna have a space, I don't think, that they're gonna be needing. If they go there.
Say that again, you cut out a little bit.
They, they're not gonna have the space that they think they're gonna have. Um, if they decide to go there, they're, it's gonna be a construction zone, basically.
Okay, so that little like uh dirt parking lot area will likely be packed with. Equipment and stuff. Okay, that's great to know. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, and we are at. Number nine.
Oh, no, we've got. Senior Center.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I did not write that down. Rufus, the floor is yours.
So. Um, I wanted to find out what was going on with the. Senior Center. Um. I thought that I had heard the other day that we have not. Renewed our lease yet.
Joyce, you want to jump in? Joyce handles the lease agreement with um. The Templeton Farms Board.
I've been in contact with uh Tegan. Initially, we had a one-month, I believe it was, extension. Um, she had delegated the contract off to another committee member who is still working on it. She assured me. That there's no problem. Uh, it's just a matter of somebody updating that document. So that's the report that I have.
Okay, I just wanted to. Make sure we were still on course to. Resigning. That um. Still getting a lot of people asking about. The Senior Center and now that we have. Somebody to start thinking about it. On board, although. It'll probably be a few weeks before she's able to think in that direction. I'd like to make sure that we're. In contract for space.
So that was the very first thing that I mentioned to Samantha when I met her. Um. And so we're probably gonna do a walkthrough, just to take her over there for a little field trip. Um, do a walkthrough of the space and um. Have. Um, impressed upon her the importance of getting it open, that we've got three private schools. Restaurants, club getaway, all just waiting in the wings to provide meals. Um. So for the, that Friday lunch to start up again, so um. Hopefully, we will, um, we'll hear from Samantha maybe by the next meeting with some sort of um plan to move forward.
Okay.
Sure, number nine, do we have any? Bookended closing public comment? Raise your hand, turn your camera on, I'm scanning. You don't see anything. Ready. According to Apple. It is six oh six. And we have um accomplished a. Two hour and one minute. Order Selectment Meeting, which I think it's been a long time since we've done that. So I appreciate everybody's focus and participation and um. We will, Joyce, if you want to sign us off at, um, oh, we needed a motion. I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting at six oh seven.
Second.
Fantastic. All those in favor? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.